Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no.
Hey buddy.
I hear you.
Sounds like I'm being a people.
We're gonna put them in.
Looks to be turning out bigger than they're gonna be watching it.
Weather, yeah.
Big big weather.
They don't help.
Does it?
It's true.
Are you saying? His name is Chris Small. Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Hey, yeah, you? Really?
Call the meeting with Glasgow City Council order. Would you please stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can remain standing. I'd like to call on Christie Lowry to lead us in a prayer, please.
Thank you. Bow your heads, please. Dear gracious and heavenly Father, Lord, I just lift up your glorious name and thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. Dear Lord, I ask that you be with us this evening as you are always. Watch over us and help us to make good decisions, Lord. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Mayor Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Vanail?
Present.
Eubank?
Present.
Gottes?
Here. Yes, ma'am.
Gross?
Here.
Honeycutt?
Here.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Here.
Neal?
Here.
Norman?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Trigg?
Here.
Witcher?
Here.
All present.
You have the minutes of the last council meeting, January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, in front of you. Is there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, do I have a motion? We accept the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Vanail, second by Brad Gross. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Minutes are approved. We have several municipal orders that we're gonna read and vote on, so you'll have to bear with us as we go. First one is municipal order appointing Wendell Honeycutt to the nine-one-one board.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Wendell Honeycutt is hereby appointed to the nine-eleven board. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brad Gross, first motion, uh, second?
Second.
Second by Gary Norman. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion passed. Next municipal order is appointing Justin Richardson to fill the unexpired term of Joe Trigg to the airport board.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Justin Richardson is hereby appointed to serve on the airport board to fill the unexpired term of Joe Trigg, which expires August first, two thousand twenty, subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the motion, do I have a, uh, hearing, excuse me, the municipal order, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Happy Neal.
Second.
I have a second. Second by Terry Vanail. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Order passes. Next municipal order is appointing Gary Norman to the annexation committee.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Gary Norman is hereby appointed to the annexation committee. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the municipal order, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion to Terry Vanail, do I hear a second?
Say.
Second by Christie Lowry. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Next motion is municipal, uh, next municipal order is, uh, appointing James Happy Neal to the annexation committee.
Municipal order number blank by, on order of the mayor, James Happy Neal is hereby appointed to the annexation committee. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term of office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
After hearing the order, do I have a motion?
So moved.
To approve? Got a first? Gary Norman, do I have a second?
Second.
Freddie Norris. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The next, uh, municipal order is appointing Sharon Rust to fill the unexpired term of Danny Basil to the Board of Adjustments.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Shannon Rust is hereby appointed to serve on the Board of Adjustments to fill the unexpired term of Danny Basil, which expires June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the municipal order, do I hear a motion to approve? Witcher. Mr. Witcher, uh, Councilman Witcher, motion?
Second.
Second by Gary Norman. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Order passes. Next municipal order is appointing Joan Norris to fill the unexpired term of Nancy Pointer to the Code of Enforcement Board.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Joan Norris is hereby appointed to serve on the Code Enforcement Board to fill the unexpired term of Nancy Pointer, which expires July thirty-first, two thousand twenty, subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the municipal order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Lowry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vanail. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, excuse me. All those, uh, opposed signify by like sign. Uh, order passes. Next municipal order is appointing Joe Trigg to the Community Relief Board.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Joe Trigg is hereby appointed to the Community Relief Board. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Councilman Gross, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Patrick, Councilman Patrick. All those, all those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, like sign. Order carries. Uh, the next municipal order is appointing Patrick Gompf to the Community Relief Fund.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Patrick Gompf is hereby appointed to the Community Relief Board. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by, uh, Freddie Norris, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Gary Norman. All those approve of the motion, all those approve of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Municipal order passes. Next municipal order is appointing Marlon Witcher to the Electric Plant Board.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Marlon Witcher is hereby appointed to the Electric Plant Board. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing municipal order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Kirkpatrick, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Honeycutt. All those approve?
Can I ask a question, uh, mayor?
Pardon me?
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Sure.
On Marla?
Sure.
Just with all the information or misinformation that's run through here, through the Electric Plant Board, I was gonna see if, if, uh, Councilman Witcher could bring back, like, monthly recaps that you could share with us. You know, anything from, you know, I mean, people's on a variable rate and the fixed rate. How many customers are paying in to try to help other customers? You know, whatever. I'm not smart enough to know what the questions are you need to ask, but I was just wondering if, because of all the last couple of years, if you could just kind of give us a report. You'll be there. Uh, you'll be the only one that's got a foot in both ponds unless the mayor or somebody shows up. But I was just gonna ask if that was okay.
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
All those in favor, I've already got the first and second.
Yeah.
I lost my track.
Sorry.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign.
Mayor Armstrong, could I interrupt just a moment?
Motion carries. Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to thank Councilman Norris and Shellberry Ambach for serving on the Electric Plant Board for a number of years. So just to let you know, we appreciate your service, serving on, on that utility board. And then, Mayor Armstrong, I'd like to ask, what criterion have you been using to make your selection to the Electric Plant Board?
Well, with Mr. Councilman Witcher, I don't guess it matters. Councilman Norris asked that he not serve anymore, and I had Witcher on one. I already had the, of the committees all lined out to make it even. I asked Witcher if he would serve down there, and I put, uh, Councilman Norris on the committee that he was on. And, uh, that's the way I came up with that one, because Councilman Norris asked if he not serve anymore. And, uh, and as far as the appointment with the citizen, uh, I had several people that had called and said they would serve on different boards. Some of them wanted to specifically serve on other boards. And, uh, Mr. Biggers had said he would like to serve on that board or the, or, uh, the Water Company Board, or one or two, I can't remember now, of the things he asked for. And I told him we didn't have any appointment in any of those others, but we were gonna have one on the Electric Plant Board. He said he would be willing to serve, so I had him to send me a little bio on, because I knew who he was, but I didn't know a whole lot about him. And I'd be welcome that you look at that if you'd like to. But he, basically, he's a teacher here at school. He's been an instructor on a college level. He's, uh, has a PhD. And, uh, I think he's qualified to listen to the, to the, uh, all of the items that would come before them. And point out one thing before I close out. I wanna thank, uh, Cheryl Ambach for serving. She's been on there for eight years. And, uh, I'm of opinion that about four years, each person, four years on the board, if they can tolerate all the problems that you occur, I feel like she's done a good service for Glasgow. And, uh, who knows? If this is approved tonight, four years from now, if I'm still up here, I'll probably be putting somebody on her place, Mr. Biggers. But, uh, that's just an opinion. And, uh, if anybody'd like to see his credentials and have a little bio, I'd be glad to ask him around.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor? Yes. Now, now that the fervor has settled just a little bit down there, I learned a lot. And that was part of my reasoning to ask to be moved to another service area. And no particular one, I didn't suggest anybody, but there's much to learn. And I appreciate the help that I got.
Yes. Ask a question?
Sure.
How did, I mean, did Cheryl want off, or did you, was that her choice, or was that your choice? And when you talked to her, what, I mean?
I didn't even talk to her. A close friend of hers told me she was fed up. And I said, okay. And that's the last I heard until it came out in the paper that she was willing to serve again.
Right.
I'd already put two people down on here at the time. And again, uh...
Would that make a difference if you knew that she was willing to serve? I mean, I get the point about the four years, but...
Not after, not after, not after her being on there eight years. If she'd been on there four years and said she wanted to go again, I probably, I mean, I would've taken that consideration, because I think she's been a good board member.
I think she's been a great board member. My only, my only issue with, I don't have any issue with Mark Biggers as a person or a teacher. But I do have an issue putting somebody on there. And I wanna use this phrase gingerly, that was in a hateful group, that of the thirty-six people that was in that closed group on Facebook that spewed a lot of venom, that their family was in one that actually saved money.
Well, then vote against him.
Huh?
Vote against him, then.
Okay, I will.
Please enough.
Good enough, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. We're gonna read this order. Before we get into this, I would like to, if it's the will of the council, I'd like to have the city attorney draw up a resolution thanking both Freddie and, uh, Cheryl for their service to the Electric Plant Board. If that's, uh, okay with everybody here, I think they deserve that. And if, uh, there's no objections, I'm gonna ask him to do that. Okay? All right, now, the next, uh, municipal order is appointing Mark Biggers to the Electric Plant Board.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Mark Biggers is hereby appointed to the Electric Plant Board. This is a four-year term, expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Okay. Okay. Uh, hearing, uh, hearing the order, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Marla. Uh, under the circumstances, I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear him through the motion lines.
The first motion was Wendell Honeycutt. I think I'll have a roll call vote on this, so there won't be any, any, uh, discussion or misunderstanding. How about that? Do a roll call vote, please.
Vanail?
Yes.
Eubank?
Yes.
Gottes?
Oh.
Gross?
Yes.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Next municipal order is municipal order reappointing Jimmy Nelson to the Fort Williams Rest- Restoration Committee.
Municipal order number blank by order of the mayor, Jimmy Nelson is hereby reappointed to the Fort Williams Restoration Commission. This is a four-year term, expiring February ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Do I, you've heard the, uh, the order? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion by Honeycutt? Have a second?
Second.
By Norman? All approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, like sign. Motion passes. The next, uh, municipal order is appointing Gary, Gary Norman, the GEDL. That's the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board. And would you please read that?
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Gary Norman is hereby appointed to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board, GEDL. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the, uh, order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion by?
Vanail.
Vanail, have a second by Gross. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Order passes. Next municipal order is appointing James Happy Neal to the Glasgow Baron County Animal Shelter Board.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, James Happy Neal is hereby appointed to the Glasgow Baron County Animal Shelter Board. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the order, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion by Marlon Witcher, and I have a second?
Second.
By Gary Norman. All those approved signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Order passes. Next municipal order is appointing Marla, Marla Kirkpatrick to the Glasgow Baron County Salvation Army Service Unit Committee.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Marla Kirkpatrick is hereby appointed to the Glasgow Baron County Salvation Army Service Unit Committee. This appointment shall run concurrent with her term in office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Norris, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Councilman Vanail. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Order passes. The next municipal order is reappointing Al McGlover, Nunk Pro Tunk, to the Historic Preservation Committee.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Al McGlover, Nunk Pro Tunk, effective March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. This appointment shall be a two-year term, expiring March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion by, uh, Councilman Lowry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Happy Neal, Councilman Neal. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Order passes. Next municipal order is reappointing Sarah Smala, also it's Nunk Pro Tunk, to the Historic Preservation Committee.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Sarah Smala, Nunk Pro Tunk, effective March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. This appointment shall be a two-year term, expiring March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Uh, Councilman Neal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Honeycutt. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Order passes. Next, uh, municipal order is reappointing Becky Barrett to the Historic Preservation Committee.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Becky Barrett, Nunk Pro Tunk, effective March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. This appointment shall be a two-year term, expiring March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, and is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion by, uh, Councilman Gross, and a second by?
Vanail.
Councilman Vanail. All of us approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. The order passes. The reason we have so many of these that are being Nunk Pro Tunk is because some of these have been out for a year and a half. Some of these, uh, committees have just ceased to exist, but we are reviving them, putting people back on the council that was on there and new ones that are not, to try to get more of the community involved in these projects. So that's the reason we have so many at this time. Uh, municipal order reappointing Danny Gibson, Nunk Pro Tunk, to the Housing Authority of Glasgow.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Danny Gibson, Nunk Pro Tunk, effective December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Housing Authority of Glasgow. This appointment shall be a four-year term, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, and is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the, uh, order, municipal order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Witcher, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council, Councilman, uh, Kirkpatrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion, I mean, the municipal order passes. Next municipal order is appointing David Jesse to fill the unexpired term of Danny Basil to the Joint City-County Planning Commission.
Uh, municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, David Jesse is hereby appointed to serve on the Joint City-County Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Danny Basil, which expires June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the order, do I hear, have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have one by, uh, Councilman, uh, Vanail, and I have a second by Councilman Gross. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Municipal order passes. Next municipal order is appointing Chastity Lowry to the Plaza Theater Advisory Board.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Chastity Lowry is hereby appointed to the Plaza Theater Advisory Board. This appointment shall run concurrent with her office, with her term in office, and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the municipal order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion from, uh, Marla Kirkpatrick, uh, Councilman Kirkpatrick, and?
Second.
Councilman, uh, Gottes?
Yeah, please.
That's a second. Uh, all those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed, like sign. Is approved. Uh, next municipal order is appointing Wendell Honeycutt to the Plaza, Plaza Theater Advisory Board.
Municipal order number blank on order of the mayor, Wendell Honeycutt is hereby appointed to the Plaza Theater Advisory Board. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, mayor, Jamie McFarland, city clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
I have a motion by Vanail and a second by, is it, uh, Neal? Correct? All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. The order passes. The next municipal order is appointing Marla Kirkpatrick to the Renaissance The next municipal order is appointing Marla Kirkpatrick to the Renaissance Steering Committee.
Municipal Order Number Blank, on Order of the Mayor, Marla Kirkpatrick is hereby appointed to the Renaissance Steering Committee. This appointment shall run concurrent with her term in office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January, two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Norris, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman, uh, Witcher, is that correct? I can't see you all, we're sitting in a straight line, so you may have to call your name out for me to get it right. Uh, I have a, all those approved, all those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. The order passed. The next municipal order is appointing, we need to withdraw this, uh, municipal order because Jenny, Jenna Wiley has come to me with a committee that she wants to start in Glasgow, and we haven't had it here, but it's probably a good, a good project. So at this time, we're going to withdraw that, uh, municipal order, and if we get everything worked out on the committee that she's wanting to bring to Glasgow, then we'll bring that back before you at a later date. The next, uh, municipal order is reappointing Becky Barrett, Nunk Pro Tunk, to the Renaissance Steering Committee.
Municipal Order Number Blank, on Order of the Mayor, Becky Barrett, Nunk Pro Tunk, effective December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Renaissance Steering Committee. This appointment shall be a two-year term, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January, two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve? Have a motion by Witcher, Councilman Witcher, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, second by Councilman Neal? All those, all those approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those that are opposed, like sign. Order passes. The next order is appointing Joe Trigg to the Veterans' Wall of Honor Standing Committee.
Municipal Order Number Blank, on Order of the Mayor, Joe Trigg is hereby appointed to the Veterans' Wall of Honor Standing Committee. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January, two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Have a motion from Councilman Gross, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Councilman Norris. All those approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Or, order passes. Uh, next municipal order is appointing Marlin Witcher to the Veterans' Wall of Honor Standing Committee.
Municipal Order Number Blank, on Order of the Mayor, Marlin Witcher is hereby appointed to the Veterans' Wall of Honor Standing Committee. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January, two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion from?
Kirkpatrick.
Kirkpatrick, and I have a second from?
Trigg.
Uh, Trigg. All those approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose, like sign. Order passes. Uh, the last, uh, municipal order we have is appointing Brad Gross to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Municipal Order Number Blank, on Order of the Mayor, Brad Gross is hereby appointed to the Water and Sewer Commission. This appointment shall run concurrent with his term in office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-eighth day of January, two thousand nineteen. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Hearing the order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
I have a motion from, uh, Councilman Lowry, and I have a second from Councilman, uh, Benel. All those approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Order passes. Next order of business is ordinance, second reading ordinance for the City of Glasgow to make application and acquire bonding in the amount of six million, uh, five hundred thousand dollars to finance the aquatic center project vision recently initiated by the City of Glasgow.
Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash blank, an ordinance for the City of Glasgow to make application for and acquire bonding in the amount of six million, five hundred thousand dollars and no cents to finance the aquatic center project recently initiated by the City of Glasgow. That whereas the Planning and Development Committee of this council recommended that the city undertake the construction of an aquatic center as a recreational facility for the citizens of Glasgow, and whereas the firm of Hilliard Lines is prepared to enter into a bonding agreement to provide bond financing for the projects, therefore it is hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a bond issued to be administrated through Hilliard Lines, which if approved will be used to construct the aquatic center project at the old VFW Park in Glasgow and update the other Glasgow city parks. The total request shall be in the amount of six million, five hundred thousand dollars and no cents to be allocated as follows. Five million dollars and no cents for the aquatic center project. One million, five hundred thousand dollars and no cents for city park updates. Section two, that Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for and secure bonding through Hilliard Lines, but shall be amortized over a twenty-year period, being four hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred dollars and no cents repaid per year over the twenty-year life of the bonds. Payments to be made monthly. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk. Uh, first reading was January fourteenth, uh, two thousand nineteen.
Hearing the ordinance, do I have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Have a motion?
Yeah.
Have a motion from Neal, do I have a second?
You got a second.
Got a second from?
From me.
From Gottes?
Now, are we open for discussion?
Yes.
Alright. I just want to read this real quick, and I think this will help all of us, and we can move forward. Hope all of us city council members appreciate the dialogue and social media inputs we have received on this issue, even though some common courtesy guidelines have been crossed. I find myself asking some of the most vocal commentators, are you registered to vote? Do you vote, and do you pay taxes in this community? With that being said, we are elected to office with the role being good stewards of taxpayers' money. We're also tasked with trying to develop new methods and ideas to advance our community's appeal to potential new industries. Everything in this ordinance is needed. Contrary to talk around the city, our parks have been the recipient of some dollars, but a lot more is needed. I think our community would benefit in different ways from a new water park, and so do at least ten other cities across the state. They are competing with us for new businesses and are currently considering this same water park issue. Therein lies the gray area, which we find ourselves, and we have to make a decision based on fact. I would like to make a motion to commit for two months, and that's a motion for this to go back to committee. And this is to give the Parks and Recreation and Infrastructure Committees a chance to meet and produce a priority list of the projects needed by this city. The results from these meetings should then be taken to the Finance Committee to determine if funding is available. This vetted package would then be returned to this council for vote. So I'm making a motion to commit for two months.
I would second that.
If we need to do this under any structure than what it's got now, I think it needs to be in the form of another motion. We either vote for this and don't vote for it. If we don't vote for it, there's talk about putting the committee back through, doing what needs to be done in the parks, and then bringing that back in a motion without the water park. But I don't think that we can, we can put this back under its circumstances.
Were you moving to table this? No. It would be, uh, according to the KRC, our guidelines and stuff, motion to commit. This motion refers to the main motion, which is the one that had been first and second. And any pending amendments to a committee for further consideration. In other words, it lets us put that motion on hold while this goes back to committee, and then once it comes out of that committee, then that's when we would vote on it. At least that's the way I read it. Does anybody?
Well, if you give us just a minute, if that's the case, we'll have to vote on that, on your motions, before we can vote for the second on the southern.
Mayor Armstrong, if I may, while you all are looking this up, we do have our representatives here this evening, Branson and Carol.
I understand that.
Harley and Ben, if any of the council or public that are in attendance have questions for them, they are available for that.
I think all that's in that study that everybody has on the council.
Well, they may have it on the council, but it's been misrepresented in multiple outlets, that some of the information that's been put out there isn't necessarily true, so I thought?
That's fine, I think it's been misrepresented in its body too, but?
Oh, I agree.
But we need to, we need to either vote on it, or do what his legal options are, and go on to something else, one way or the other.
I agree.
This has tore this council apart, it's tore the community apart. My phone rings daily, numerous times, urging one way or the other, and since I don't have a vote in it, I think you all need to decide what you need to do, and whatever's legal, we'll do.
But, and I second your motion, if I can ask, uh, Councilman Trigg, basically what you're saying is, put on hold, do we get feasibility, feasibility study be back? More questions could be answered, and then in two months after it goes through the committees you've read, it will come back to this council, same as we're sitting here today, to vote on it.
Well, first, after it came out of committee, cause I guess part of the misunderstanding is, is whether it went through, was vetted through the right process. So if we, if it goes back to those committees, and then it goes to the Finance Committee, and then the Finance Committee can say, yea, we have enough money to do this, or no, we don't, and here's your priority list, and we can fund. Maybe we only have enough money, or, you know, capability to fund the improvements to the park. Maybe there are other facilities in the city that need major improvements, like an elevator in the Sid, Main City building. Maybe the monies would be allocated for that. But everything that those two committees would come up with, would then go to the Finance Committee, and that would be, uh, Joe and Stephanie back there, setting in, that's the Treasury and the Finance Officer, setting in with the Finance Committee, and then they would bring that package back to the city and say, here's what we can come up with. Here's a priority list for the Parks and Recreation, here's a priority list for facilities of this city, here's where we stand, here's what we can fund over the next few years.
Mayor Armstrong, in my address, Councilman Trigg's comments there to refer this to committee, uh, it can go back to the committee, but be advised that, uh, if the committee does not move on that, then it won't come forward. So you're referring it to a committee?
Right.
And then this ordinance, uh, as looked at, at that committee, uh, may not come out of that committee. It's referred to a committee.
Yes.
You need to understand?
And then, yes, that is, that is a potential, and that's probably the reason they have that in there, is, is there's some confusion, and then this needs to go back to those committees, and they may say, hey, we don't want this, or it's number three, four, or five on the list, or they may come back and say, this is what we need.
If they approve it and bring it back before it can be put in just like it is now. If they fail to go any further with either one of the committees, then it's been disapproved.
Well, I would think at that point, Mayor Armstrong, that you would put your foot down, and, and to either of those committees, and, and push this issue. We can't afford to have something like this defy this city.
No, we can't, and two more months, it's going to be the same way. There's a few of you that come in, and I'm not, I'm not pressing anybody, but a few of you've come in, and you've looked at the financial constraints, and you've got together, you took the time to get together what it's going to take to do this, not just to do the park, but we, we don't have any exact numbers. If you talk to Bowling Green, you talk to E-Town, you talk to Somerset, some of the people that have mentioned these cities, they tell you that cost, the cost of the park is the beginning of it. You've got, you know, everything else. But it doesn't matter to me, other than if we're going to refer it back to the council, I'm not going to keep everybody, I mean, back to a committee, and then it go through the Finance Committee and the Parks Committee. I'm not going to keep all, all these councilmen tied up in this for sixty days, when we've got a lot of other stuff we need to fix. So if you understand that it goes back to them, and they say it's not a priority, we don't want to do it, we don't want to fund it, then that takes the city council out of voting. So I think, I think this council has approved it on one basis, I think you ought to either approve it, or, or, or disapprove it tonight, instead of depending on four or five people that's sitting on two committees to make the decision for you. But that's up to you.
My only comment would be that, I've talked to a couple people in this room, that they would like to see the feasibility study. And that would be the reason that I would back your play, Joe, is Branson and Carol will bring a feasibility study that will give us more knowledge than we have now. I mean, it says five million dollars, but I don't think we've ever, wherever it is, I don't think we ever laid five million dollars in the ground. Um, you know, if you talk to Williamsburg and Litchfield, six thousand, seven thousand people, they built the park for three and a half million dollars, three, seven, it's perfectly good for them. But I would think the twelve of us would owe it to the fourteen thousand people, versus a survey coming, feasibility study coming, and in my understanding, it'd be in the next couple months. That we would want to see that, or the Parks and Rec would want to see that before they made a final determination.
That's what we see.
Mayor Armstrong, if, if I make a comment, uh, on the ordinance, and I, I'm assuming I'm in order here, I don't know if we're just discussing, uh, Councilman Trigg's move to take this to committee or not, but, uh, Mayor Armstrong, I, I like Councilman Trigg, I, I appreciate the comments made by the citizens in Glasgow regarding this, this ordinance. I've received a lot of valuable comments, and I, I do appreciate those. I know that, uh, each council member here believes in the parks in Glasgow, and wants to see improvements made in, in those parks, and, and I value those thoughts. However, as I sit here as a council member and talk to a lot of citizens in Glasgow, I cannot support the ordinance, and I will speak against the ordinance. Uh, I've looked at the financing for this, uh, and our, our budget does not give us enough room to finance a six-point-five bond issue. A debt service of four hundred fifty-four thousand dollars on an annual basis, we don't have that type of surplus. If we do this, then where goes our pay raises? Where goes the purchase of vehicles? Where goes the improvements to a roof, a repair of a roof, or to install and repair an elevator? We're just not going to have the money to do that. There's a lot of unknowns out there. Uh, you look at our ad valorem taxes, our taxes for real estate and vehicles, they've stayed flat over a number of years. You look at our payroll taxes, our payroll taxes, our net profits tax, that's a large part of our general revenue. And if we were to lose any payroll taxes, we'd be in a hurt in this city. That's our, about sixty percent of our general fund revenue comes from payroll taxes. So if we were to lose any jobs, that's going to impact us financially. And the other part that I've got to say about this is maintenance. I have spoken with people in Litchfield, in Lisbitown, Kentucky, and they like their aquatic centers, but they don't like the maintenance associated with those facilities. They do not like the what-ifs associated with them, and their revenue does not cover their expenses. When you look at how we, as a legislative body, have treated the parks in Glasgow, how can we maintain a six-million-dollar aquatic center? That's hard for me to get my hands around. We have shown that we haven't upkept our parks, and the comments that I'm hearing from the citizens of Glasgow is they want to improve the parks, they want to be able to go out into the parks where they're safe, where there's activity in the parks. They'd like to see the improvements, the restrooms, the shelters, the lighting, the security cameras. They are not in favor of financing over twenty years of bond that we can't afford, and, and what other constraints are we going to place on the city by undertaking this? So, uh, Councilman Trigg, I'm not speaking to your motion to go to committee, I'm speaking to all the council members to vote no on the ordinance. We've got priorities that need to be made in the parks. The master plan tells us those priorities, and it is up to us as a legislative body to listen to those concerns and to be financially responsible for the citizens of Glasgow. Let's, don't put this burden on this city. We have lots of other items that we need to attend to, and a bond issue paying debt service of four hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred dollars a, a year does not need to occur. So I would recommend my fellow council members to vote no on the ordinance. Thank you.
Most of the people that have called me, uh, support?
Most of the people that have called me support what Terry is saying. I think there's a little fear involved, maybe that we had dropped the other part, which is improving all of our parks. And we have heard at the last meeting pluses and minuses as far as where we need to start, what we need to do. But I think there's some fear that we vote no, that it's going to wipe away everything, and I don't think that's what we're saying.
I think we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Trigg that we need to address before we go any further with anything. Is that correct?
Yes.
We have, you made the motion, now we need a second.
I seconded it.
We have a second. Now we need to vote on his motion. And if it passes, then that's what we need to do. If it fails, we'll go back to the vote on the other. Everybody that's in favor of Councilman Trigg's motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Let's have a roll call.
Fennell?
Against.
Eubank?
Against.
Gantz?
I'm for.
Gross?
Yes.
Honeycutt?
No.
Kirkpatrick?
No.
Lowry?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Norman?
No.
Norris?
No.
Trigg?
Yes.
Witcher?
No.
Have seven no and five yes, so the motion of Councilman Trigg fails. Now we can bring back up the second reading. You already read the ordinance.
Mayor Armstrong, may I just speak for just a moment before we move forward? I just want to take this opportunity, because a lot of information has been out there in our heart, but I just want to speak for the men and women who work for the Recreation Department and the commitment they have to our community and what they have done with the parks that we have. I looked at Eddie's maintenance budget, and that was spent 62% over the last 10 years. And we've needed vital services in this community. We needed fire trucks, we needed police crews, we needed all of those things. And our Parks and Recreation Department has suffered for that. The overall budget was down 18%. And I do not want those who are employed by the Parks and Recreation to think in any way that these discussions are opposed to the work that they've done. I believe they've done the best they could with the resources that they have. And regardless of what happens here with this next motion, the Parks and Rec, it's their turn, they deserve our support in whatever capacity that comes, whether it comes through aquatics, cameras, bathrooms. I want our children, our adults, to have the best parks that they can get. I just want to make sure that those employees are recognized for the work they've done on a constrained budget the last 10 years.
I appreciate that comment. There's no other questions?
I have some comments to make.
Go ahead.
We already have a first and a second, right?
Yes.
Okay. I've looked at the numbers again, and I've gone back to the audit, which ended June 30, 2017. If that balance, if all things being equal, if we could build an aquatic center and not have any operating loss over what the swimming pool loses every year, we'd have about eight years in the general fund we could pay for that. If we hit the 30-year financing, we'd have about 10 years. That's it. Which still, at 10 years, if we did that financing, we still have $7 million left to pay on it. We just, we cannot afford it right now. Patrick made the suggestion on the landfill, use some of that money. That money is all committed.
All $13 million is?
Every bit of it is committed.
But let me, let me.
Your own balance, right there.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
But let me go, you go ahead.
And it is, it's been loaned to other funds, and some of it's committed for the closure, post-closure.
That's 5.3 million.
We also need money for opening new land sales. We need money to buy clay. If we run out of clay on the farm that we bought for clay, there's always something. We would have had to spend well over a billion dollars on the methane remediation if we hadn't had the Farmers RECC step up to the plate like they did. Five years from now, they may discover that methane and styrofoam react and something, you have to insert some exotic chemical in there. We don't know. I never would have guessed methane would be a problem 10 years ago. You don't know what's going to happen with that. And you can't just say to the EPA, oh, I'm sorry, we spent our money on the aquatic center. We just do not have it. The reason Eddie's budget's been cut so low, when I looked at the 2016-17 budget, it was $36,000 for repairs and maintenance. It's that low because that's what it took to balance the budget. We can't just think, oh, awesome, we're going to spend nine or 10 million dollars, and it's going to magically drop out of the sky for us. We haven't had that good of economic recruiting lately. So I just think now is the wrong time to do it. I think we, as a council, recognize that the parks need more attention, and I think we should make a commitment that if we have to dip into the general fund reserves for a little bit, we need to get them up to shape. Eddie does need more money. He can't prepare everything for $36,000.
Mayor, do you care to clarify for everyone the landfill budget? Or Stephanie?
The money that's in the landfill, Stephanie can speak to it, too, I think from memory. We have so much we have to keep in there for closure, post-closure. We have to have a bridge to get to the clay to do the field, and that was 10 years ago, was bid at $395,000. Probably cost us 450 or more today. That's just to get our trucks over into that area to bring it back to field. And the landfill's not going to go on forever. That money was set up 25, 30 years ago to stay in that fund, to pay for these things. Some of them are federally mandated. Back about eight, nine years ago, we were trying to figure out, the federal government had mandated we do something with the gas out there. Well, they had came up with several projects. We could burn it, we could tube it out, and we could burn it. We couldn't just put it up in the atmosphere. And we had people came forward, they were giving tax credits to groups to come in and take care of that. Well, we were thinking about doing that. And then some, then it came up with, Farmers Real Electric stepped up and offered to, if we would pay for the generator and pay for the compressor, pay for everything we need and then pipe it to that, then it would run that generator. It will generate electricity, and we're putting it back in the grid. So we got a interest-free loan to put those things in, and it so happens that in four years, the money from that, putting that electricity back in pays that loan off. And if we've got methane gas out there at that period, we'll start collecting about $100,000 a year income. But if the methane gas runs out, then we've got to finish the loan for the compressor and so forth. And then at that point, we'll have to do something else in the landfill to eliminate the gas. So there's, there has to be at least $3.5 million, now that 5.1, in there at all times. Because if it's not, we're not doing our due diligence to continue that. Plus, if we don't keep extra money in there, 15 years, 19 years, whatever it is down the road, when we do that last sale closure, we're going to have to make arrangements for another landfill. And that won't come cheap. We're probably looking at $15 million to set that up. But the landfill makes money. It takes in money every day. But the thing of it is, if you don't have a landfill, that income goes away. So we spend money sometime in the near future in order to have that space to put the landfill in. So it's a matter of putting obligations on somebody other than this body, whether it be our children or our grandchildren. In that 5.3 million, we've got to keep at least 3.5 in there just to service that landfill like it has to be.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I think if Stephanie and Joe were here, if I made a mistake on that, you're all welcome to stand up and clarify.
Yep. I'd just, I'd like to ask a question. The, because I don't want to, in the sanitation landfill fund, there's, at the end of, back at the end of last June, there was $7.2 million.
Right.
And in the post-closure account, there was 4.448. Now, it's my understanding that the money that is restricted, and if I'm wrong, somebody tell me, the money that's restricted is the closure, post-closure money.
That's correct.
And then it's my understanding that would it probably be good prudence to leave 2 to 3 to 4 million, depending on your conservativeness, in the 7 million account?
Has to be that much in there just for what we got going on.
Right. So let's just say 3. Let's split the difference. So that means there's 4.2 million. Now, I'd get back to that in just a second. But of the 11, 12 million, and I, you know, I may not be that good at finance, but at 12 million, I can probably get a 3%, 4%, 5% return on A-rated bonds, probably at least 3% to 4%. So if I take 12 million and I just say 4, I mean, that's half a million dollars a year just on interest.
From what account you're talking about?
From the two landfill accounts. The one, because you still got to, I would think you'd have the closure, post-closure money on a bond or CD.
It's on a.
You can't, that is restricted so much. There's about one thing you can do with that, and that's what it's on. And it's on a CD.
So that's the only?
Big X, throw it.
Okay.
We can't do anything but add money to it, and the state's going to make us add 650,000 more next year.
Okay. All right. So let's just go to the 7 million. Is that restricted only to CDs?
The 7 million's all been loaned to other funds.
No, for?
It's been loaned to other city funds.
As in what?
Uh, straight department, general fund, anybody else?
So we got a, you're saying we got a zero balance as of June 30?
Well, we have a fund balance of $10 million, but on the fund balances, anything uncommitted is zero.
Since you asked me the question.
We've loaned it to other funds within the city.
So this money's already being borrowed out, so we're already underwater because we're loaning against it. So we really don't have 7 million. Even though we got to stay, even though we got to keep 3 million, we're underwater already.
Well, we have, we have reserved back what we have to have for the closure, post-closure.
Which would say, you would say this to be this number?
And we've also.
Because I like to sit in on the finance.
And then we've accrued another closure, post-closure of a million, right?
Okay.
Okay?
Got it.
And so then we have what we've loaned to other funds, what other funds.
We can't take all, I can do in the budget. Let me clarify one thing to this point. You asked me a question.
Yes.
If you hadn't been over budget for the last three years, we wouldn't have to worry about it. But y'all have been over budget for the last three years, and if you take three more years just like that, you won't have anything in that $3 million.
And I would make the argument that the last three years, we've been catching up from the last 10 or 15 years. I mean, there's a ladder fell off the fire truck on the way to the fire. I mean, that pretty much.
That fire truck was programmed for five years. It was paid for in their budget every five years, and then got the fire truck. But there's no sense us arguing. If you don't understand the budget, then we don't need to be discussing it.
I probably don't understand.
Let's go back to the budget.
Maybe somebody can help me with it.
And Mayor Armstrong, that was the reason I made my motion, to send this back to committee because there's too much confusion.
I understand.
And then where the money is, who has the money, where it can be spent, all of that doesn't need to be argued in this format.
That's correct.
It needs to be argued back into committee at this year, before they ask for this money. This money should have been asked through the finance committee. So the appropriate way to do this would be, again, to send this back to those two committees. Let them figure out what they want, and then bring that to the finance committee. And then the finance committee and the treasurer can say, yay, we have the money.
That's already failed. The only thing we can do now is, on the motion that has been voted on for a second.
Mayor Armstrong, can you make the comment that we've been over budget the last three years?
Correct.
Stephanie, how much have we been over budget the last three years?
Now, I'm not talking about budget amendments. I'm talking about strict budget. And at the end of the year, you made amendments and added back to it.
Stephanie, can you clarify what that means exactly?
When the budget came to council, let's just start right there. When the budget came to council, your 18, 19 budget just was balanced at $72. The year before that, we budgeted to spend part of your fund balance to get buildings up in shape. That was your perfection group program that you voted. We spent some of our fund balance on that. Okay, so it was in the negative because we budgeted to spend part of our fund balance. The year before that, we were just balanced.
And was there one year we were over, that we actually gained in revenue a little?
We did.
About three years ago?
We did.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that I understood what we had talked about.
Well, this budget here, we're not through 18, 19, and any way you look at it, it's going to be over budget. We're right now, I don't know if this is discussing that, but I'd be glad to sit down and show you the budget and where it's at. But part of it's due to some purchases that wasn't in the budget.
Mayor Armstrong, I'll call for the question. Make a motion for the question.
All right. Call for questions. Take a roll call vote.
That requires a second on that. That's a point of order. On the question, there's a point of order, please. We needed a motion and a second.
Okay, so we got a second. Now we can take a roll call vote on the second reading. I'm sorry, I'm not well schooled in Robert Truitt orders. Okay, have a roll call vote.
Fennell?
No.
Gross?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
Norris?
No.
Eubank?
No.
Honeycutt?
No.
Neal?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Gantz?
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick?
No.
Norman?
No.
Witcher?
No.
Seven no. Seven no and five yes, the ordinance fails.
Just the ordinance as is, right? So we can still go back and start all over, right, with a different perspective?
Yes, we can go back to the Recreation Department. Recreation Department and to the Finance Committee and come up with a plan to do the work on the parks that everybody seems to want to do, and I know we need to do it. So that will go back into effect, and we'll try to get some numbers and come back and see what we can do on the parks themselves. And again, I'd like to say the same thing as Councilman Lowry stated, that this is no reflection on the Parks Department, no reflection on their employees, because this has been an ongoing thing for probably 15 or 18 years of the neglect of what needed to be spent. So you can rest assured, if this group, I know that the seven that voted no are just as intense as the five that voted yes to get the parks fixed. It's just that they don't feel like they're doing due diligence to spend as much money as the whole package. So you can be assured that we're going to put as much work in on getting our parks up as we have in this spirit of comments tonight. So I want to thank y'all for your hard work, even though it doesn't look like it's going to pay off, it will soon. Is there any more new business?
Could I ask a question just out of, and the Parks and Rec Department, I'm not on it anymore, and they make their own decisions, but these people have done all the work in the parks. I didn't know if you wanted to continue to engage them, or if that's a Parks and Rec meeting that you'd want to, you know?
We're going to take the survey that they've got and put it with some independent local people that's done some surveys and take them both to the, to the parks starting out, and along with Eddie, and let him review all those things and see if there's extra stuff that needs to go, that was overlooked here, and then we're going to start getting bids and go from there. Okay. Was there any new business? Got some announcements. If I can get through these, they're pretty lengthy. Our elevator, all the parts are in, on site. They put two of the big components in, and Friday he told me that it'd take them about three weeks to finish all the work and get the inspections. So we're probably going to have to be over here for a couple more meetings, but hopefully we can start having them back in City Hall after about the third or fourth week from now. Also, I'd like to make all the, I think most of the councilmen know this, but I want to make the general public aware, we've added to our website all the committees, all the boards that everybody up here is sitting on, me included, and we're posting them. When we have a meeting, we're posting them on the Glasgow website. If we had a meeting this morning, there's five councilmen on there, they all five were there. You're going to get a report card on the councilmen, what they're doing behind the scenes. scenes every day. And if you want to go to visit that website, you can see that they're working, and we're not just here in front of the meeting and, and trying to conduct business, but we're also working behind the scenes where most of this research and work happens. So I think that will be a, a good thing for the council people because they'll all want to know they're getting graded, they want to participate, and I think it'll be a good thing for the, all the public. They can go and see if their favorite person that they're calling complaining about something, if they've been to the committee meetings and trying to, trying to work on these, on these problems we have. But just because we disagree doesn't mean we're not able to get things done. Everybody up here, I think, has a passion for our children, for our city, or they would be putting in their time. It's just that we, that we want to do it in a way, we're not obligating our children or our grandchildren to something that maybe is not as popular as it seems like it is with the public. They may want it, but when they see how we're going to have to pay for it, they may not want it. And that may be the issue in a lot of things we're going to do in the next three or four years. But if you'll bear with us and you'll call your favorite councilperson and tell them what you think, that'll be a, that'll go a long way to us making a decision that's right for the most of the people.